Okay, Phil, we're recording.
Okay, terrific. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, August 19, 2020, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting via Zoom platform. Our procedures will be as follows. When you first enter the meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn your camera, you can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others if you so choose. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting via the new virtual environment, unless otherwise stated by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members even if you are muted and/or your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during the public hearings, at which time the public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.cigilford.co.us, and also through a direct link on the Planning and Zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, they will then do the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at (203) 453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after 9:00 a.m. Ten, all actions taken by the commission this evening will be on a roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening are the following members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd ask that you just say hello and wave. Scott Edman.
Hello.
Very good. Richard Wallace.
Good evening.
Sean Cosgrove.
Good evening.
Jamie Stein. Hi, Jamie. Alan Brown. Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
And I'm Phil Johnson. All right. The staff present are George Croll, town planner, Aaron Mannix, our zoning enforcement officer, and Lisa P. Ambino, our planning and zoning administrative assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notes. Richard, you want to grab that one if you've got it?
I don't have it, Phil.
Ah.
I've got it.
Anything?
Well, got it?
Here goes. Got it. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on August 19, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 situation, this meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised not to go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. See the sign in below. Zoom meeting, meeting ID 967-5689-3671, password is 72441. The following applications will be heard. Greg Monroe, 111 Whitfield Street, MAP 32, Lot 102, Zone R1. Cam requests for zone boundary change from R1 to C1. Trolley Barn Crossing LLC, 129 Water Street. MAP 32, Lot 17, Zone R3. Special permit per Section 273-13C and coastal area management application for change of from one non-conforming use of retail to another non-conforming use as office. Copies of these applications are available for inspection on the town's website at www.cigilford.co.us. At this hearing, persons may attend by either phone or web connections and shall be heard. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7B, any materials relevant to matters on the agenda, including but not limited to materials related to specific applications, if applicable, shall be submitted to the agency a minimum of 24 hours prior and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. And any exhibits to be submitted by members of the public shall be, shall to the extent be feasible, submitted to the agency's minimum of 24 hours prior to the meeting and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office. Dial (203) 453-8039 for assistance. In accordance to the Governor's Executive Order 71, this legal notice is being published on the town of Guilford website, Dated Guilford, Connecticut, the 7th day of August 2020. Phil Johnson, Chairman.
We're on the 19th of August, but other than that, we're good, right?
Yes. Well, that's when the meeting was noticed.
Ah, very good. So, first item on their agenda is Mark Knapp, 94 Great Harbor Road, MAP 7, Lot 7, Zone RS-1. Special permit and coastal area management to build a new home on a lot less than 10,000 square feet at the request of the applicant. They have asked to continue this until our first meeting in October, which is October 7. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yes.
Would someone like to make the motion to continue?
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Would someone second that, please? Very good. Thank you, Alan. Do a quick roll call vote. Scott Edman.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
And I will also table that to the 7th, and we have to do something with that one on the 7th. Our next item is Greg Monroe, 111 Whitfield Street, MAP 32, Lot 102, Zone R1. Cam requests for zone boundary change from R1 to C1. Is someone here to present on behalf of Mr. Monroe, or is Mr. Monroe here himself?
Mr. Monroe is here. Good evening.
Greg and Christina are here, as well as John Matthews.
Terrific. We'd love to hear what your ideas are.
Sure, so just a little introduction. Good evening, everyone. I said my name is Greg Monroe, petitioner for property owner Christina Monroe. Also on the line is our architect, John Matthews. I thought Todd Anderson would also be joining. He might be joining a little bit later, both of whom have been involved in some preliminary site planning and feasibility analysis in support of this petition. So this petition is for a R1 to C1 zone change on Lot 102, also known as 111 Whitfield Street. Aaron, I know John had sent in some documents that I think you might be able to pull up.
Sure. Which plan would you like first, Greg?
Maybe we could start with the area map, and I could get into maybe describing the proposed project that would accompany the potential zone change?
Yes. Is that visible?
Yes. It is, yeah, a little small. It's there.
Yeah. A little bit. That's much better.
There you go. So, yeah, so what you see there is Lot 102. This is the parcel of land in question right there in the center. Just a little bit more background on the parcel there is the same ownership is the two lots directly north, northwest of this parcel, which are currently commercially zoned as C1. So this change would essentially extend the C1 coverage to this lot as well. The two lots north of them, one is known as the Whitfield Square Building, has Amroni's and the spa on there. And then right below it and directly adjacent to this property is 103 Whitfield, which houses four residential units, four different apartments there.
Oh, yeah, it needs some air.
And then there's the, there's some ample parking beneath that or behind that building there as well, which is also open to the public. So it essentially extends the C1 zone coverage down to this parcel of land, 102, which is under the same ownership. Now, the intent behind this change is in support of what we feel is a desire to have a greater variety of housing in the town center area. So the plan would be to build eight condo-style apartments, as well as a small, separate commercial building on the street frontage. One of the goals here would be to maintain continuity with some of the surrounding architecture, so it has an unchanged feel to it. Maybe, I think John also submitted a site map, and it might be appropriate to change to that piece at this point in time. Let's see here. Yeah, so the positioning of this map, I guess north would be, let me gain my bearings here, to the bottom of the screen, correct? Okay. So on the top of this site plan is the proposed changes of the proposed project with the C1 change. Now, Lot 102 is mostly an interior lot, which is where we would propose building these residential units. What this does is it would allow us to maintain the street facade with a small shop or office space up front with the residential rental units being built in the rear interior space of the lot. And they're really kind of pushed all the way back as far as possible to that boundary. So they're kind of nestled back into the interior space, which currently is just a wooded area. There is one house that currently exists on this lot. It's an older house, has some foundation issues, so essentially it would be a knockdown. And the idea would be to replace it with the proposed construction that we're talking about here. One other item that I think is of interest is, with parking always being a topic of interest, there would be exclusive parking for these units. And that parking would be, when I look at the map, all the way up at the top in the middle of the screen there. However, along with this plan, we would propose modifying the existing parking lot behind the adjacent property, which is more in the middle of the map here, which is Lot 103. And what this would do is it would allow additional public parking for the green, further supporting small businesses and traffic around town center. As we know, parking is always kind of an issue in the area. And just to kind of reiterate, this plan is exclusive to just Lot 102. So there's no plans to, you know, join this with any other adjacent lots. Further interior, I know there's been some churn on some interior lots, change of ownership in the recent months, but none of that would be affected with this. It's mainly completely consolidated, just this parcel of land. But with that being said, I mean, you know, we could get more into details of what the, you know, proposed, you know, exterior of the building and some other layouts would be. I'm not sure if that's appropriate for this meeting tonight. John Matthews, as he mentioned, is also on the phone, the architect, so he could also answer any questions or provide some additional insight to what we'd be looking to do here.
John, you have, sorry, going to unmute John, Aaron? I got him. Hi, John, sorry, you're unmuted. If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be terrific.
John Matthews, architect at 817 Boston Post Road in Madison. I've developed a concept plan for Greg and Christina to show what would be possible from a residential approach and a mixed-use approach by having a commercial building up on the street, on Whitfield Street, which would continue the street facade, where right now the existing house is quite a ways back, so there's a snag in the street facade. And then the eight two-bedroom units would provide additional housing within 400 feet of the Guilford Town Green, which I think is very desirable, to have alternate housing types in the village center. But it wouldn't potentially be a mixed-use development with a commercial building on Whitfield Street and the residential units in the back. Each of the units would be about 1,250 square feet. But again, they're conceptual at this point. You know, they're not final designs. Just enough to see that we could fit something like that on the parcel. The other thing that I think Greg mentioned is the eight parking spaces that are to the rear of the three remaining lots in front of us on Whitfield Street would be under a carport roof, so they would be totally screened off from the back of those houses on Whitfield Street. So I'd be happy, the other good thing about the site plan reorganization is right now the existing parking lot behind Amroni's is sort of disorganized with a reworking of that parking lot. We've added a two-way in and out. Where right now, that's just an exit, there's an entrance here, and we've added additional spaces and reorganized it. This is their existing trash for the restaurant in this location here. The current parking lot is very haphazard back there, and this would really improve, you know, downtown parking within 400 feet of the green, landscaping and lighting and drainage.
So, just a quick question, if you don't mind. Obviously, you know, the plan is to not combine these properties, but to keep them separate. But it seems that we're bringing in parking from the two commercial lots right now onto the parcel that we're talking about?
Yes, but this new lot would also be the same commercial zone, C1 zone. So there would be easements and so forth. So it truly would be developed as one parcel, even though it may be under some separate titles.
Not that it's our issue, but doesn't that potentially create problems if you were ever going to sell off this parcel?
Well, you would simply have your easements for the parking and all. It would go with the land, so it really wouldn't make a difference. I mean, it's not to say that you might want to combine them all into one parcel. I mean, that's not unheard of, but this application is simply to make this piece right here the same zone as the rest of this, to go from R1 to C1, which is also all along Water Street.
Right. Just for the benefit of everyone that's here, because of this change, we have a requirement for at least two meetings. Were you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, just want everyone who's here as well to be aware of that. So, you know, while acting a lot of, asking a lot of questions about this tonight, we won't be acting on any type of an approval or otherwise for this, so.
Phil, could I add one thing? This is George. Just perhaps this is clear to everyone, but the current zoning on this parcel, the R1 zone, would not permit this density of residential development. So that's the driving force for the petition to create the C1 zone, which would allow a higher density of development than the R1 zone would, a higher density of residential development.
This is Sean. George, you know, I know that the parcel that now, you know, has Amroni's and some other businesses, you know, it used to have the Pones and the, you know, the theater there, is the parcel that joins this lot, just to the south of where Amroni's is. Was, has that always been C1, or was that also rezoned at some point?
No, I don't, I think it's always been C1.
Okay.
George, I have a bit of a, this is Jamie, bit of a, I guess, history question. Is there some other precedence for this type of shift from C1 to R1? Is it, you know, because it's contiguous with C1? Is that sort of favored conversion? Or, I totally agree with what you're saying about the ability to increase the density of housing out of space. Is that kind of a goal for us to look at this type of conversion? I'm just wondering, historically, what favors a conversion to commercial from residential?
I can't think of any examples of C1 to R, I mean, R1 to C1 off the top of my head. Certainly, the fact that the properties are contiguous is in favor, is a plus in that so-called spots, any spot zoning would be avoided. This would be a continuation of the same C1 zone. And as I think the applicant explained at the beginning, there is a market for residential, higher-density residential, and perhaps also for rental housing. And that's the, that's kind of the fundamental force behind this project is to allow that, which you would not, you would not be able to develop that density of housing under the current zoning, the R1 zone. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yep, it does, thank you. Rich?
Richard Wallace here. George, we got Cam involved with this application?
No.
No, it's not in the Cam zone, no.
It's within the physical boundaries, but that's not a required referral for a Cam application in the regular procedure?
Just to make clear, the, if this zoning amendment, the MAP amendment were approved, the applicant would then have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission a second time with the details of the site plan for the proposed new use, the residential use as they're describing. So you're not acting on any, or you wouldn't be acting on any particular residential development as part of this petition. All you would be doing is changing the zone, which would then permit, in the future, a residential development proposal.
George, what else might it permit?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What else, what, I mean, obviously, once we make the, if we were to make the change, if the idea of the eight two-bedroom units didn't pan out, it would still be commercial. What else could potentially go with it?
Well, you know, as you can see around the green, the, this area, the green, a wide variety of commercial uses are also permitted in the C1 zone, retail stores, restaurants, and offices. So that's, it's certainly true that any of those or any combination of those things could be proposed in the future if the zoning were approved, and those would be permitted uses.
And George, I'm assuming that this would come up at a later stage of the planning for this and the, you know, people coming before this board and others. But as far as drainage, obviously, there's going to be less permeable area for this lot as parking spaces are put in. I'm assuming that'll be part of this whole process of, you know, evaluating its appropriateness for this area.
Well, the, any site plan that would be made pursuant to this change would be subject to all the same rules and regulations that would pertain to stormwater management and drainage, and all of those things would have to be properly engineered and designed, and any adverse impacts mitigated as part of the site plan process. So that would be, that would be true regardless of, you know, what type of proposal was made. I don't believe there are wet, correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but I don't think there are any wetlands on this property.
I don't believe there are.
But they would have to do stormwater management and all of the other things that are part of the current standards and criteria for any kind of development.
George, can I ask a question? Why isn't this presented to us as an entire package in one swoop? So if, in fact, we approve, we would approve what's going to be built, the whole plan, as opposed to kind of a little bit putting the cart out in front of the horse by just changing the zone?
Well, you're not permitted, under Connecticut law, to make a change in zoning conditional on a specific use that's being, that would be then therefore required for that zone, if that's your question.
No, my question is, just why aren't we seeing this all as a whole proposal? As opposed to...
Well, they can't, you can't...
...approving zoning first and then getting a site plan?
Well, they can't, they can't, you can't consider or act on a site plan or a use that's not permitted. So they have to get the zoning approved first and go through the normal process to have the zoning approved. And that's subject to all the potential appeals and other process that goes with any zoning MAP amendment. And only when the new zoning is in force can they submit a site plan for a use that is permitted in that zone. They can't, they can't submit that now. I mean, they obviously can, and they in fact actually have...
They have.
...consideration. But your approval of the zoning amendment is not a guarantee that that residential development will occur. I mean, they could decide they're not going to do anything. They could decide they're going to do some other use that's allowed in that zone. I mean, clearly, you know, their intent is as they've described it, but there's no guarantee that that would be their proposal. And there's no guarantee that it would be approved, even if it is permitted, although as a permitted use, as long as it satisfies all the quantitative standards of the zone in terms of density and setback, and as long as it satisfies all the best practices in terms of site planning, stormwater management, and the other site planning considerations, then it would have to be approved, assuming it's a permitted use, which this...
I think John is raising his hand. John Matthews, are you raising your...
I didn't understand your question, I'm sorry.
No, I think you're raising your hand as George was talking.
Yes, well, what I wanted to say is that this is a concept plan. We had talked to staff. We made our application with just a straight application required for a zone change. And in talking to staff, they said people might be interested in what your thoughts were for the property. These are total concept things, they're not an actual plan. The one thing that's unique about this lot is it's mostly an interior lot. So it's an atypical lot down in the village zone. Almost every other lot is strictly street facade lots. The bulk of this, it's just over one acre, is an interior lot. So it's an atypical lot. And it seems logical to extend the commercial zone, at least to me, into that, which gives you good variety for development, for taxable use, for things close to the village district in the green.
Phil, just to elaborate a little bit further, Phil, on what you were asking about, at least as I understand it. And we did talk about this with Greg and his professionals several months ago. There are other zoning vehicles that we could create that we don't now have as part of our zoning code that would allow something like this. We could create some kind of provision for a planned development district, which would, in effect, be, I think what you're asking about, that is to say, under certain conditions, such as being contiguous to a commercial zone, in a residential zone, you could permit... in a residential zone, you could propose some other use that wouldn't otherwise be permitted in the residential zone based on a specific plan. And that could, in theory, be approved as one package, as I think you're asking. We don't have any kind of vehicle in our current zoning code that would allow that to happen. So we would have to create some kind of new special planned development district process. And there are communities that have that. In order to enable this to happen, we'd have to write criteria for, under what circumstances it could happen, et cetera. But we don't have that now. And I think the simplest and most straightforward way of accomplishing what they want to do is to petition for the R1 to C1 zoning.
I had a question. This is Scott. I'm not sure if this is for Aaron or for Georgia, for the architect, but I would imagine that there's some neighbors on the call. They might be interested to hear the difference between, if they were to tear down the house and build a different, single-family residence in an R1, what the setbacks would be and that sort of thing versus if this change is made to C1, what setbacks they're looking at for that lot? Could you walk us through that difference?
With the, let me start with that, and Aaron can perhaps add on to it a little bit about the specific numbers. If they were going to develop this property in its entirety in accordance with the R1 zone, the R1 zone permits single-family and two-family dwellings on 10,000 square foot lots. So again, it's conceivable that this property could be divided, subdivided into multiple 10,000 square foot lots, each one with a single family or two-family dwelling on that lot. It would, each building would have to be separated from the other buildings in accordance with the setback standards and so forth. So it's possible, and I don't know how many lots you would actually be able to obtain out of this parcel, but it's possible you could do that. You'd have to create some kind of right-of-way driveway or road to access those lots. So it would be a much more awkward, perhaps, and less planful approach to the provision of multifamily housing as they're proposing it. It's conceivable you could do something like that. I don't have the zoning table in front of me to tell you what the setback requirements are. I think they're, it's probably 12 feet from the side property line, would be the R1 zoning setback. And maybe, I don't know what the rear setback would be, maybe 20 feet?
15.
I'm sorry?
15.
15 and 12. Okay. So that's what the, that's what the single-family or two-family unit would have to be setback from the property lines. And each of those lots would have a separate building on it that would have to meet those setback requirements.
How about the setback to C1? What's the setbacks for the C1?
Aaron would have to tell you that from the table. It's probably eight feet, but I'm not sure.
Yep. Let me just blow it up here so I could read it. Sorry. I can share this with you here. This is Table 3B, C1 Zone. You've got a 10-foot rear yard setback, a 10-foot side yard setback, a 10-foot setback from a residential zone. Your lot coverage is 50%. Your floor area is 100. You have an impervious surface coverage of 70% in the C1 zone.
Could you scroll over to the R1?
Oh, that's a different table. Hold on just a second.
Different table, sorry.
Yep, that's a commercial.
One of the problems with the R1 zone is each lot has to have 80 feet of frontage on a street. So you're going to have to somehow build a whole new street going back in there. You'd probably be lucky to get two lots, because the lot is 45,000 square feet at the moment. Most of it would be eaten up with roads. And you'd have to have a cul-de-sac, and then it would be, you know, probably, you'd be lucky to get two lots back there.
Yeah, it's an odd-shaped lot.
So the setbacks are actually a little bit shorter for R1 then?
R1, you've got an eight-foot one side, but your aggregate between the two is 24.
Okay.
And your rear is 15.
Thank you.
And the coverage goes from 15% to 70%.
Well, scroll down to the...
We don't have an impervious coverage requirement for residential zones, only building lot coverage. And you do have the ability to buy special permit to get an additional 10% lot coverage in R1 and R2 zones as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any questions from commissioners at this point? Or are we on, to open this up to, what I'll do is I'll ask for first questions from the audience, and we can move from there. So commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. I'm assuming that we've got a few people in the audience that are interested in asking some questions of the applicant with respect to this project.
Yeah, we could unmute everybody for a moment.
Well, if we do hand raising, I know.
Right. I can just say, we do have a couple of phone call-ins. So I do have some hand raising here.
Okay.
So we couldn't...
Well, why don't we go with...
You see?
Why don't we go with G. Pepe? Would you like to ask a question? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Greg Pepe. I'm an attorney in New Haven, and I'm here on behalf of Scott Brewster, who owns one of the houses on Whitfield Street that its rear lot line abuts this development 115. Is that right, Scott? Is it 115?
119, and for the checkers, I go by Scott. My full name's Charles E. Scott Brewster.
And we're opposed to a zone change. I'm happy to get into that, if you think it's appropriate. The questions are pretty basic questions. Scott has just a brief thing that he wanted to say, and if you would allow him to do it at this time, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Our usual procedures are ask questions and then go for comments, but for the sake of a budding neighbor, why don't we afford you the opportunity to speak now? And maybe that will lead us to some other questions as well.
Sure. So absolutely, Scott Brewster here with my wife, Amelie Brewster. We oppose the zoning change proposed at 111 Whitfield Street. When we purchased 119 Whitfield Street, one of the characteristics that appealed to us was that it was in a residential area near the historic Guilford Town Green. The residential zoning wasn't particularly important to us. The proposal for eight rental units and one commercial building to be built on the single residential lot next to us, wrapping around our house, seems so out of character and charm of historic Guilford. The lot is too small for this high density, and changing a residential to commercial zone is very disturbing to wake up to. The driveway needed to support all these new structures will greatly increase the danger for our kids aged five and six walking to the green, as with all town residents and town visitors. I also fear the quality of upkeep of the rental units, as many commercial owners treat rentals much differently than personal residences. We value charming historic Guilford, and this proposed zoning change is a scary step away from that.
Thank you.
Yep. So I will make a comment later, if the commission would allow it, that sort of, I think we'll point out a couple of legal issues associated with zoning change that's being requested. I just, I think that there's a lot to argue against this zoning change, and I'll defer to the commission when you want to hear that.
Sure. So what we'd like to do is just field questions first, and then we'll go to, I'll allow you to speak in the comments section, both for and against. So would anyone else like to ask a question of the applicant? If you raise your hand or let Lisa know. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, that's always required. Suzie the Birthday Girl. Hold on one second. Get you Suzie. Unmute. Happy birthday, I think.
A little delayed, but everything is delayed nowadays. I have two questions.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Suzie Balistracey in Gary Parrecton, 22 South Bear Street. My first question is, because it seems to imply some connection, who owns 103?
You're looking for the owner of record of 103 Whitfield Street?
I am.
That is Whitfield and Gossum LLC. It's the same owner as this parcel.
So 111 and 103 are currently owned by the same people?
That's correct.
Okay. Next question. In a C1 zone, what is the maximum square footage of a building that could be erected?
Aaron, help me out here. Throw me a lifeline.
And I want it for what the answer is for 103, and I want it with the answer of 103 plus 111.
I'm not going to be able to tell you.
Well, that's...
I can partly answer that question. There is no, there's no maximum building size in the zoning code for the C1 zone. The maximum building size would be a function of a number of variables that affect the lot. With a commercial lot, it's very hard to predict, sort of abstractly, how big a commercial building you could build.
Isn't it based on what the, how many square feet of land there is?
Yeah, there's a maximum total floor area.
That's what I'm asking.
Which is a function of how much land area there actually is.
Right.
It's expressed as a percentage. We'd have to do a little bit of arithmetic. That's likely to produce a maximum building size much larger than you would actually be able to build on any given parcel, owing to the fact that in addition to the building, you also have to provide parking for that particular use, which is also a function of what use, what the type of use is and the size of the building. So to be able to say the maximum building size is X requires a little bit of a design, if you will, or a little bit of analysis, which I doubt anyone has actually done. To just take the total property and multiply it by that percentage would give you, in extreme, the maximum building size, although that's unlikely to actually be a real good predictor of what kind of building would actually be built.
However, by the same token, how many parking spaces would be, would we be allowed for eight family units of 1,250 square feet?
For residential uses, the zoning regulations require one parking space per unit. So I think that the likelihood is they would actually provide more parking spaces than that. So clearly, for a commercial use, there'd be a lot more parking required than for a residential use. We could do a little bit...
It'd also be a much larger building.
Right. We could do a little bit of analysis of this question for the next public hearing, if you like, but...
I think that would be wise, because our concern is, we actually think the idea of the multifamily is marvelous. We always knew something would be built in our backyard. However, considering changing it to C1 and then going for the applications for what they would like to do is not at all acceptable to us. To change anything down, down to more commercial than we already have is a disaster waiting to happen.
Well, what we'll also try and do is, you know, so right now, the eight proposed units total 10,000 square feet, if my math is right, plus some type of commercial building in the front. So what we'll have George and Aaron help us with is to come up with some answers to your questions.
How many square feet did you get, Bill?
I got 10,000, if that's right. 1,250 times eight.
I would mention that probably the impervious is the best predictor, because it includes both the building and the parking. And that number was 71% of the overall lot. So that's probably a pretty decent predictor about just the overall coverage of what would happen on the lot. Obviously, the size of the building would be way smaller, because at least the same size as the parking lot, but probably...
Thanks for answering our questions.
Lot coverage in a C1 zone is 50% for structures.
Okay, there you go.
And then combined for the impervious is 70%. So you would associate the additional 20% as your parking area.
Are there other questions in the audience?
Yes, if I may?
Are you on a phone?
Yes, I apologize. My name is Attorney Vincent Injingro. I'm here with Vincent Injingro Senior, Pam Injingro, as well as Sarah Hess, my partner. We have the same exact concerns as the Brewsters, as well as Suzie, meaning changing the residential to the commercial zone. The first question is, has there been any type of traffic study that's been completed for this type of project?
I think one of the problems is we don't actually, we don't actually have the project in front of us. So right now, the only thing that's before us is the proposed change from residential to commercial. So that's what I could tell you about that.
Okay.
If you would, this is Vincent Senior. If you would anticipate a zone change from a residential zone to a commercial zone, you would also have to anticipate density would increase, meaning more trips, more people. And you can conceivably say, on any given day, you could have 50 to 100 additional trips into the center of Guilford to feed this particular site. This is on top of a downtown that has been struggling with parking issues for the last 15 years, with directional parking, with insufficient parking. So how could you approve a commercial zone which increases density without doing a study in anticipation of the density that you have? If there's eight units and commercial space being developed, you would anticipate it's going to create X amount of traffic. And in doing so, how does that affect your downtown? It's on the corner where people, you barely can get through the four-way that's there now since there's no light. My son owns the building across the street. So how do we turn a residential R1 zone into a commercial zone when you can barely get through the intersection now?
And obviously, the issue is, is we're not talking about getting through downtown on a Saturday afternoon. Driving through downtown on a Tuesday afternoon has its own complications, or a day during the week. For instance, if there's a 10,000 square feet that's needed, plus a commercial space, how many additional parking spaces are needed? How many additional cars will be anticipated following the change in the zones?
I think those are some excellent questions.
You know, one of the other things that comes into play when you do a commercial zone in downtown, your downtown is your downtown. It's a protected area. It's a village area. When you change from a residential R1 zone to a C-zone, commercial, you deflate the adjacent property owner who's a residential property owner. So when does this end? How far down Whitfield Street does this go? You can't, you know, I know the town planner mentioned spot zoning earlier. And this is not spot zoning, because this is an adjacent property. But what you're doing is, every time you rezone, you affect the adjacent property owner and devalue, because his use is a residential... Because his use is a residential use is worth less money when it's adjacent to a commercial zone. So at some point, somebody has to make a stand and say, listen, our downtown is so big that we're going to stop here and, and, and that's what we're going to live by. And that's why it's in our zone, R1 zone now.
And the last issue that's concerning is obviously going from R1 to C1 is it's one parcel to the next. And to reiterate the point is that, again, when does it stop? The next owner of the next property may want to move down the line. It'll be continuous to the point where the entire downtown is also commercial. Which again, increases density, increases traffic. Before you know, we'll have to put up stoplights. It will not be the quaint town that many people see it as, and it's obviously a major concern.
Excuse me, Vincent, are you the property on, you on 116 Whitfield Street? Is that?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, um, this is Elizabeth Nicholson and I own 115 Whitfield Street, which is right next to this property. I do echo the concerns with the Brewsters. I've owned that property since 1984. It's always been a quaint residential area. I'm particularly concerned also about the driving past the right side of my house to the back area. And what that, uh, the amount of traffic and disturbing my tenants that I have currently. I, I feel it would significantly affect the value of our properties.
We're getting some feedback, Aaron, or something.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Do you have us on a computer as well?
Yeah, I'm trying to use both. Should I?
Yeah, you need to get one or the other.
Mute the computer.
Okay. In any event, I just have some concerns about the, um, the conversion to the commercial. I just wanted to echo the Brewster's concerns.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other people that would like to ask a question of the applicant? I'm a Bridget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, there you go. Thank you. So unless there are further questions, what I would.
Anyone else on the phone here?
Anyone would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see any hands up at the moment. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate that we will have a second public hearing on this, so this is not by any means said and done. Would anyone, with no one speak up? Mr. Pepe, would you like to make a statement?
Sure.
Attorney, my apologies.
I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. It'll be brief, but, and this is on behalf of, um, Scott Brewster. As, as Mr. Kroll pointed out, there's no guarantee if you change the zone on this. There's no guarantee what will end up there. I have every reason to believe that these people are well intentioned, but economic conditions change, as you know. There's, there's incentives for other kinds of uses, office buildings, other kinds of things. And even though Mr. Kroll mentioned that this is not spot zoning, this actually is spot zoning. This is taking a parcel that is currently zoned in, under a comprehensive zoning plan and changing its zone to benefit a single landowner. It's, it's an unacceptable way, frankly, to make a change to a comprehensive zone system. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr. Kroll said. The proper way is for Guilford to adopt a planned use district and allow the owner to come in and submit an application that way. That gives the zoning board the tools it needs to make sure that the kinds of things that should be preserved in this area could be preserved, if in fact, that's the way the town wants to go. You should know, and I'm sure you do know, that courts are very skeptical of, of spot zoning decisions by towns, because you go through this entire process of adopting a comprehensive zoning plan. And then you exempt one little piece of property from that zoning plan for the benefit of one particular landowner. And it's often to the detriment of the adjacent landowners. As Mr. Brewster said, there are people who live adjacent to this proposed development, this proposed zone change, who will undoubtedly be disadvantaged and harmed by it. Uh, I think we heard from someone who said that there will now be the traffic for all of these units going right by her house. It will go right behind Mr. Brewster's house. So that's probably 16 cars, how many Pat? You know, this is the kind of thing that zoning is supposed to address in a comprehensive fashion. And I would suggest that you don't have enough information before you right now to understand what all the ramifications are if you change from a R1 to a C1. The other thing that sometimes happens is that property owners say that, you know, that their property is stuck in a particular place and they can't, they can't get the kind of value out of their property that they want. But, but this owner inherited this property from her deceased husband. And this is simply to maximize economic value. This has nothing to do with hardship of any kind. This is, this is to maximize economic value. As their own architect, Mr. Matthews said, you could probably get two lots out of that. Well, that's residential, right? And that's, that's what this is zoned for. And the only final word that I want to, want to add is that, that I promise I'll shut up. In recent years, Guilford has taken some significant steps to protect its historic green and to market that historic district as a place which creates value and character for the whole town. And although this property is arguably on the edge of that district, I wonder what kind of message it sends to the rest of the town if you rely, if you allow a high density development in an area where so many efforts have been made for conservation and preservation of the character. And so with that, I'll stop, um, but, but we will show up at the next meeting. Because we have great concerns about what this says about this kind of growth in Guilford.
Thank you for your comments. Will, would you like to speak?
I would. Will Thompson, 28 South Fair Street. A long time resident and a member of a number of boards, commissions. I think this is a profound request. We have an R1 zone request to go to C1. C1 is a very high density zone. Another thing that's going on is you have a residential block with a lot of, um, homes that are very cared for, very loved. And the pattern of the block is homes near the street for the most part. With an interior that becomes a shared garden space. It's, uh, in essence, every property has the gains of the adjacent property that it backs onto. And that creates a, a kind of open space. This proposal is completely at odds with that. It's also opening up a door for kind of a creep of the C1 zone, moving down into the residential neighborhood. And this pattern is pretty profound. It's tied into a lot of reasons. The southern part of the historic district was created similar to things that are occurring in the other historic district. And, um, I don't think it's at all appropriate. It's also going to be detrimental to everyone's enjoyment of their properties and to their property values. And it does not align with the current zone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor or against this application or have any questions?
If I may, this is attorney Vincent and Jingro, just one last time in regards to the next hearing.
Yes.
Um, I understand, obviously, this was a Zoom meeting. The next hearing, I'm unsure if it's going to be another Zoom meeting. Obviously, as we know, the Zoom meetings work great. Given as I agree, this is a profound decision. This is a very important decision to be made by the town. I would request that the next meeting be held in person. Unfortunately, some individuals do not have access to internet or do not have access to join the Zoom meetings or, or just not technologically advanced to join the Zoom meetings. I'm completely aware of the pandemic. I understand it may call, may require additional time. But the request would be to have the next meeting to be in person with the town, if possible, of course, depending on the timeframe.
Right. So, um, at this time, I'm not aware of, uh, any scheduled return to in person. So, uh, I don't believe I have the authority to, to make that change, but we can certainly discuss it and let you know, but as of this date, I would, it would be my strong assumption that it will probably be a Zoom meeting. I do appreciate, um, that it's harder for some people to get on, but believe it or not, we actually, I think we have more people attend via Zoom meetings than we had normally in person. But, uh, we will certainly try and get you an answer and we'll let you know how that meeting will be conducted and when. Uh, are there any other questions from the audience?
Is there a date for the next scheduled meeting?
Yes, there is. Isn't there? September 2nd.
Hello, um, may I speak in opposition?
Sure. Would you please say your name, name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Mary Ellen Sullivan. I live at 138 Whitfield Street. I'm a resident here in Guilford for almost 20 years in a historic home that we carefully restored and brought back to, um, be, you know, a house, a home that's cherished on Whitfield Street. We've seen the transformation of town and the green in these last 20 years and the preservation with the, you know, expansion of the historic area. We've watched Whitfield Street become a, an animated avenue to lead us to one of our most prized things as our town beach, our town harbor. We've, we participate in town activities on the green, around the green. Um, and we are, feel very strong about preserving this. We, um, as in this last, in these last several months with, during COVID, Whitfield Street has become, is so vibrant and active with people biking, walking and both ways every, all day long. Um, and the activity is quite remarkable in the transformation of the energy in the town. All of this, you know, um, in the last maybe month and a half, a child was hit by a car, a child on a bicycle was hit by a car right next door to my home here as they were biking towards town. We all know that the hazards of the pages heart parking lot coming in and out is a significant, uh, challenge for pedestrians and drivers on Whitfield Street. The fire station, which is opposite this area, is a significant, um, hazard with multi-vehicles parking on both sides for, for emergency circumstances, as I hear one happening right now. I, we have the parking lots coming out of, um, Amarone's in the back, which is a blind spot leading on to Whitfield Street to turning left. Um, and you have to ease out slowly because of pedestrians walking down. All of, all of this historic qualities of homes close to the street make all of these reasons more significant in the pedestrians and, and traffic and, and safety of, of, of all the busyness on Whitfield Street. So adding, um, eight residential apartments, which what I would imagine are each two bedrooms, they each have one parking lot. There's extra parking spaces, which in this area that you're requesting for the zoning change, it's, it's, it's not just on the, on Whitfield Street. It's taking it and it's smacking it right between South Fair and Whitfield Street, where you have all residential homes wrapping around this property. And you're putting this, so it's gonna flag lot back behind everyone. So we're not just, we have the, all the changes that would happen and impact Whitfield Street in traffic, busyness, whatever, you know, things I've just talked about and everyone else has talked about. As well as you're putting all these, this property smack in the middle of all the backyards of all of these homes that aren't in the residential zone. We are all in, in, or I'm sorry, we all are in residential homes zone here and you're, this is trying to push a C1 zone smack behind all of our properties. So we're not even just limiting it to the, the street frontage that could possibly go straight back and stop. It's going be behind the Brewster's property. It's going behind, it's going right up to Nancy Peterson's property. I know on the other side on South Fair Street. It's, it's wrapping around everybody's property. So whether it's light pollution or parking noises or parking lot noises for all those two bedroom apartments that are rentals, as, as well as the commercial property that's on the street. Um, in addition would be, and I'm rambling, but the other thing that's come up is the lot coverage we're discussing. So a residential lot coverage is, is one amount, which that percentage is significantly different than the R1 zone. Lock allowable lot coverage, not to mention impervious coverage, but on your lot coverage, that alone in a high density area, high traffic area is insane that it's, it could be seen as something that is more desirable than the coverage on a residential coverage. So, so if we have an odd lot that has to be a right of way to get you back to those two lots, that is so less invasive to our neighborhood. We are a neighborhood than it would be for if we have a R1 zone that can fill it up 70% with multiple, all kinds of vehicles going in and out all day long, connecting to Amarone's property parking lot. And not to mention the property in between, which is still R1 or is it still R1, could be easily swung over into C1, which then you have a totally monopolized lot all the way down to the Brewster's property. And also, um, the other woman who spoke, which I don't remember her name. So clearly, um, we are, are against.
vehemently against, not to put.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone else like to speak at this time? Again, uh, we will have a second public hearing on this. So if you want to, if you want to speak and you want to speak at that time, gather your thoughts, um, that'd be great.
Phil, a couple more quick questions for George. This is within the historic district, so any subdivision or anything would be, um, have to go through that or no?
No, it's not within the historic district.
Okay. Um, and then the second question is, is there literature that you could forward to us to remind us about the C1 district when it was created? Maybe, is there any literature from, from that time of how they came to the decision of making this specific area C1? Is this, you know what I mean? Like, I know that for when we did, um, some development plans, there's a whole, you know, there's an entire 90-page package. And I don't know if there's one for this village district or not.
So another thing I would have you research, if you could, George, is, you know, was number 103 added to the district or was that always part of it?
Right. Look at, we'll look into both those questions. C1 zone was created, probably, I had zoning was first created in Guilford, but, uh, so I'm not sure what kind of.
It's more of a question, is, does downtown area have a, a development plan at all? You know what I mean? That this would be part of.
No, I, the answer to that is no, but we can, we'll look into both those questions and see what we can find.
Well, what I'm going to suggest is that at this time, would someone like to make a motion to continue this to our first meeting in September on the 2nd?
So moved.
Second, second. Good. Um, I'll call a vote. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
And I will also vote to continue this to the 2nd. I look forward to hearing from everybody on the 2nd. And we will move on to our next item, which is Trolley Barn Crossing LLC, 129 Water Street, map 32, lot 17, zone R3. Special permit per section 273-13C and coastal area management application to change from one non-conforming use of retail to another non-conforming use of office. Is someone here to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, my name is, uh, is Liberato Pelosi. I live at 154 Laurel Hill Road in Branford, Connecticut. I'm the owner of Trolley Barn Crossing LLC. What I'm, you know, what I'm doing is that there's existing office space there that was, you know, currently used for, uh, like a consignment store that was supposed to be online, but it ended up being a little bit more retail oriented. I apologize for that. You know, but she's no longer there. And we're, it's a non-conformity, so we're looking. And we're, it's a non-conformity, so we're looking to, I have a therapist, it's a single woman, one therapist looking to rent the existing space, the office space. No changes to the space, no changes to the outside of the building, no changes to the signage or lighting or, or anything like that. She's working out of her home, she does a lot of telemed, I believe. Yeah, she's on also to describe her business more. You know, there's an existing site plan on the building.
I'm here, Lee, if you need me.
Okay.
Hi Gretchen, if you could state your name and address for the record and then just tell us a little about your office ideas.
Sure, it's Gretchen Law. I live at 19 Ruth Lane in Guilford, Connecticut. I have a small private practice. There's two rooms for rent, well, two rooms in one package. So one would conceivably be a waiting room, one an office. It's a simple practice. I sent, I sent my purposes in. I, you know, also playwright, I just want a quiet place to work. I see a few clients a week, it's not a big deal.
Great. It actually, I mean, it sounds to me like it's a less intense use of the property than the prior ones that we've had there, so.
Site plan for you and the floor plan, so that you can see, familiarize yourself with the location here. This is on the corner of River and Water. This is the existing flooring store. And this is the area in here, this office area, that was previously approved as retail for that consignment.
Yeah.
And I think I can show you, here is the floor plan. This is the Water Street side here and the River Street up here. Two office rooms and a reception area.
And we're not looking for no zoning change or, or, you know, nothing like that, just a use change.
No, it's a really quiet deal, honestly. It's a, I've been in practice for many years and just looking for a quiet practice near home.
Gotcha.
This is a residential zone and the, the commercial uses are legally non-conforming uses. And the zoning regulations do allow for the change from one non-conforming use to another through special permit. And that's why this application is here. In addition, it is within a coastal zone and, and does require that coastal referral as well. So you're looking at this for both.
Okay. Are there any questions from commissioners? Richard Wallace?
Yes, good evening. Two questions. I guess I, first question was to the landholder. There isn't gonna be no signage change?
No, you know, no signage change. There is space on the bottom that can be used, but she would have to go for approval, but no expansion of the signage change, no lighting or nothing like that. But if she wants to put her name, then she has, she has to follow the application to put her name on the sign, but not additional space.
Correct. And as, do you do, in your practice, do by appointment only or walk-ins?
Well, it's a little unusual now because of COVID. I'm doing a lot of telephonic appointments. I, I think at my height, at my stage of my practice, which is 30 years now I've been in practice, maybe I would see three, three to five clients a day.
Just curious about the parking, because it's a little different down there.
I don't think she does walk-ins. I think it's, you know, they're still.
Oh, no walk-ins, no, nothing like.
By appointment, yeah.
No. Maybe by appointment, three to five people a day at max.
Any other questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the audience? I can't see anyone that's, camera's blinked out. So if in fact you do have a question, feel free to unmute and state your name and address. Otherwise, we'll move to comments in favor and then comments against. Would anyone here like to speak in favor of the application? Except the applicant you already spoke in favor of. Would anyone like to speak against the application? I am comfortable with waiving the second public hearing for this special permit. Any concerns or thoughts from other commissioners on, with respect to that? Phil?
I kind of agree. You got a little bit less, even a less intensive use than you had.
Yeah. I mean, if you recall, we've seen this, I think at one point it was a music studio or it was a proposed music studio, which, you know, again, was a less intense use than the conveyor belt factory. So, you know, at each step, we seem to be moving toward a less intense use, which hopefully is good for the neighbors as well. So.
I guarantee you that there will be no imposition on any neighbors or anyone. This is a quiet, kind use of the property.
Sounds that way. Would someone like to make a motion to waive the second public hearing? Thank you, Richard. Someone like to second that?
Scott.
Thank you. I'll do a quick roll call vote on waiving the second public hearing. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
And I will also vote to do that, so we will make a decision on it this evening. Very good. What do we got next? Aaron? You want to go to deliberation of public hearings and take care of Charles?
Yes.
So.
In your, in your memos that I emailed out second today, you should have a proposed motion.
I got that.
Throw it up, Richard.
Voted that the Guilford Plant, Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for a change of non-conforming use from retail to office and a coastal area management application at 129 Water Street, map 32, lot 17, on showing in an application dated 7/17/20. This application is approved based on finding that the proposed use will be more compatible with the neighborhood and that is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. The special permit is effective on August 28, 2020 and upon filing with the town clerk.
Thank you for your motion. Would someone like to second that?
I'd second it.
Thank you, Sean. Discussion, I mean, again, I think it's a less intense use. It's, you know, perfect office space, nice, quiet. I, I fully support it, but would like to hear from you guys if you want to chat or just go to a vote, however you feel comfortable.
Yeah, this is Jamie. I mean, I, I agree that it seems, you know, like a perfectly good use of the space. My question is just more, you know, how does a non-conforming use make its way in there? What's the history of this? This is the second time that, in my time on the commission, that I've seen a non-conforming change to a non-conforming.
So this, this building was originally Leeds Conveyor. So they were an industrial manufacturer of conveyor belt systems. And obviously, they, correct me if I'm wrong, George. You know, they had a, a, a commercial use in a residential zone that was pre-existing. So they're allowed to continue doing that.
Okay, so the residential zoning came after this building was already in place and operating?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It was actually an industrial use originally.
Got it.
It might have been a forge originally, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That, that, those uses, the industrial uses probably, you know, did any zoning laws in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully that answered your question.
It does, thank you.
So do we have a second on that, though? On that motion?
On it.
Sean, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, without any other comments, anyone? I'll call the vote. All in favor or against? Scott Edmund?
For.
Thank you. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
For.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Thank you, Frank. I also support this change. Congratulations, Gretchen. Enjoy your practice and enjoy your office. Okay, she's muted, but that's good. We're done with that one.
Okay, Pat Gansett.
Well, we got.
The first two are, are just placeholders. Michael Marinus, you've already set the public hearing for September 2nd, as well as your zoning amendment on the extension of temporary outdoor dining certificates.
Great. So this is Pat Gansett Holdings LLC.
Exactly.
Dash quote Peddlers Ridge, Peddlers Road, map 73, lot 1, zone R8, four-lot subdivision. I assume this is receive and take action?
It's already been received. Todd Anderson is here from Anderson and Associates, as well as Michael Harkin, the engineer, on record for this subdivision. And we have not done a presentation yet on this one, so.
Todd and Michael, welcome.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
Aaron, you want to pop up the plans? I'll go through them real quick.
Sure.
All right, so I'll make it official. Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name's Michael Harkin. I'm professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering, located at 78 Wolf Hollow Lane in the Town of Killingworth, Connecticut. The survey of record for this project is Mr. Todd Anderson, who's, and also with me tonight to answer any questions you have. And then the, we do have some inland wetlands on the site, so our inland and wetlands person was Mr. Richard Snarski. So again, this is Peddlers Ridge subdivision. It's on Peddlers Road. It's a four-lot residential subdivision. As you can see here, we have lot 1, which is frontage on Peddlers Ridge Road. And then we have lots 2, 3, and 4, which are basically linked together by a shared driveway. So there'll be one driveway shared by those three lots. And then off to the right, we do have a conservation easement, which Todd Anderson will discuss after I present. So on the next sheet is.
Just to, you're all aware, this kind of backs up to the highway here on Peddlers across from Dennison Drive, just to kind of familiarize yourself with the area of where we are.
Yeah, there's a location map in Todd's upper left-hand corner, as well as our title sheet has one as well.
Sure. This is a revised record subdivision, so I have this map, so I have to pull yours up as well, Mike. But yeah, that's basically where we are.
Did I read that right? Is each parcel five acres?
Uh, no, they're not that big.
Okay, it's like, wow.
We do have an individual, individual breakdown. So again, here's our, here's our chart. The first was the title sheet, the second was the Todd Anderson's plan. And then the next one is our site development plan, which shows all the required grading, tree clearing, houses, erosion controls and septic systems. It's important to note that each one of these lots meet 100% of the zoning regulations as far as lot size, coverage, and things of that nature, as well as frontage. The, the next sheet is just a physical breakdown of the soil testing results for the septic systems. And then, because we do have a shared driveway and we be increasing the impervious to the right of that screen, we do have a detention pond, which we've gone through and designed pursuant to the town engineer's requirements. We have reviewed this with the town engineer. I believe she was pleased, she had no comments regarding that. And then the next sheet down below is all the extensive soil testing that we did on the lot for the septic systems. And then the following sheet is our detailed sheet, which has all the requirements as far as building and, and individual lot construction and things of that nature. It's important to note that we do have health department approval. We do have inland wetlands commission approval. We do have approval from the Board of Selectmen to accept the conservation easement. And with that being said, I'd like to kick that over to Todd Anderson, and he can discuss about the, the open space requirement and things of that nature.
Hi, so we are in an R8 zone, which requires each lot to have 160,000 square feet. We, this property has existed prior to the requirements of the zoning code. So we are allowed to have two R7, so, size lots. We did a free cut of a parcel A adjacent to lot 1 to the west. That was an R7 lot. And lot 3 is our other R7 zone-sized lot. So those two lots fit the zoning code. The conservation easement, we were originally proposing that to be an open space area. And in talks with the town and the land trust, they did not desire to take that as open space. So we are proposing a conservation easement on that portion of lot 4. It is 4.78 acres, which is well and above the 10% required open space. It's actually about 22% of the property that we are proposing for a conservation easement. And it went to the Board of Selectmen and they have accepted that as a proposed conservation easement. It still needs to go to a town meeting to be accepted as a conservation easement. If they do not accept it, it will be a deep-restricted parcel of land that cannot be developed, cannot cut it or do anything to it. One thing I do want to say is, there is a letter from Kevin McGee that states that we are to pin this conservation easement every 50 feet. In all of our other applications, all of our other subdivisions that we've had conservation easements on, we have put signage up every 50 feet on metal fence posts with the town plaque that seats it as being a conservation easement. Nowhere in the regulations does it state that we have to pin those points. That is something that is a lengthy process to pin. We can mark those points every 50 feet. We can put up those fence posts and placards and mark out that area. But to actually set physical iron pins every 50 feet, I don't feel that should be required. So that part of Kevin McGee's letter, I would object to. Everything else in his letter, I agree with and we will fully comply with. I, one more thing I want to say is that all these lots have the required areas, upland areas, buildable areas, the lot squares, everything fits zoning regulations. The driveway and access to all the lots fit the zoning regulations. And the wetlands, inland wetland agency approved our driveways and accesses to these lots. So we fit the letter of the law in all aspects. So I'm open to any questions.
Todd, Todd, this is George. I just want to mention two things. One, I believe it was the Wetlands Commission that actually recommended an easement for this area, which is substantially wetlands. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And also, it was our preference, at least from a staff point of view, that your client pay a fee in lieu of this open space. But you, you declined to do that, is that correct?
Yes, because 50% of the property is within the 100-foot review zone. 36% is within. 100-foot review zone. 36% is within 50 foot of the wetlands. And 15% of the property is wetlands. So the requirement of a subdivision is that you do 10% open space. We are offering over 20% as conservation easement. And we don't feel that the need of fee in lieu of is appropriate for this property, being that we can only develop about half of the property. So to require a fee in lieu of, in my opinion, is overstepping the boundary of the regulations. I'm sorry, are you still there?
Thank you, Ron.
What was that?
Thank you, Ron.
Alan's dog.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, the dog was out ejecting.
Yeah.
But, but.
Dog gets a question.
Being that half of the property is undevelopable, to make my client pay a fee in lieu of, when area-wise, we really could have gotten five lots out of this property. And because of the topography and the wetlands and the setbacks and everything, we scaled it back to four lots. We feel that we are going above and beyond the requirements. And we are offering up a large chunk of this property as a conservation easement. There's a large chunk of this property that is not ever going to be developed because of the steep slopes and the wetlands that carve out this property. So the, the fact that the fee in lieu of, I don't feel is a significant burden on my client to develop this property.
Thank you. There are a couple of memos here.
Yep.
So Sean, you want to grab the one from Johnson, and I'll tackle Kevin after that?
Okay, Johnson's is after Kevin McGee's, right?
I have it right here. Can you see it?
I've got, I've got the one from Kevin. I don't see. I've got the one from Dennis. Yeah, okay. From Dennis Johnson dated August 10th, regarding Peddler's Ridge subdivision, Patagansett Holdings LLC, map 73 lot 1. Soil tests conducted on the applicant's property on September 6, 2017, revealed suitable areas of shallow bedrock with permeable soils. Septic systems constructed for each of the proposed residential properties were required that systems be constructed entirely in elevated fill and designed by a professional engineer. Water supplies for all lots will be provided by onsite private wells. Based upon soil tests and site plan review, and is recommended that the applicants propose, so those are be approved with the following condition. One, septic systems for lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 should be designed by.
Great. I have a letter here from Kevin McGee dated August 18th. I will, it's somewhat lengthy, so I'll try and get through it as quickly as I can. The applicant is proposing to subdivide a 22-acre parcel into four lots. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide low-impact development best management practices, and is utilizing several of the recommended practices to prevent additional erosion to the driveway and siltation of wetlands. Sections of the driveway with slope greater than 8% are being paved. The stormwater management system consists of roof water discharging into infiltration galleries and stormwater detention basins to treat runoff from the shared driveway. The plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with 273-97B subsection 6 of the zoning code. At the inland wetlands meeting dated July 8, 2020, the Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission approved a subdivision referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the recommendation that no site work be conducted until the conservation easement documents are filed and the easement area is marked with signage. The commission also approved with conditions a regulated activity for Patagansett Holdings LLC Peddler's Road, map 73, lot 1A, proposed four lot residential subdivision on the project parcel that is comprised of 22.6, 2.26 acres. A portion of the property, 4.78 acres, will be set aside for open space. Regulated activities consisting of installation of a shared driveway for three of the proposed building lots, reworking the driveway slash roadway on lot number one, and creation of detention pond to manage stormwater runoff within 100 feet of jurisdictional review zone. The subdivision plan also, the subdivision plan shows open space conservation easement consisting of 4.78 acres to be based on lot 4. This conservation easement meets several of the requirements in section 272-41 for dedication of land. The conservation easement will preserve four acres of forested wetlands with important animal or plant habitat. The wooded frontage maintained along Peddler's Road helps to maintain the scenic area. At the Board of Selectmen meeting on August 17, 2020, the board approved a recommendation that the town of Guilford accept the conservation easement. Recommendations for conditions of approval. One, town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Two, to assure future compliance with stormwater management system in accordance with section 273-75F of the zoning code, a written maintenance and operation manual for all water quality control basins located on private property. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection and maintenance of storm waters, stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, quarterly inspections of catch basins, removal of accumulated material, non-native invasive species in the swales and energy dissipators. The maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection slash maintenance requirements may be modified, and that changes to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer. B, an as-built drawing of the completed stormwater system prepared in accordance with section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 6 Construction. C, the applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 7 Maintenance Covenants of the Town of Guilford Zoning Code. Three, in order to prevent the construction in the conservation easement area, I recommend the following conditions. The language of the conservation easement shall be in accordance with the standard conservation easement document of the town of Guilford. The terms of the conservation easement shall be made a restrictive covenant running with the land binding on successors and assigns. If a conservation easement is not approved by a town meeting, the applicant shall file a deep restriction with similar language. B, conservation easement be filled in the town land records at the time of the filing of the approved subdivision map. No building permit shall be issued and no site work to be conducted until the conservation area has been properly marked with iron pins and signage approximately 50-foot intervals and turning points. Five, as noted in section 272-24 of the subdivision regulations, a digitized copy of the final subdivision plan be submitted to the commission in PDF format showing all property lines. For all property lines. I believe that's the end of Kevin's memo. Just, I know you talked about the pennings. Is, is this the first, George, that, that Kevin is asking for someone to do pennings?
I'm not totally sure, but I believe so.
And what's the logic behind pennings versus just the signage?
I can't, I can't speak to that. Maybe Aaron can.
Yeah, I, I talked to Kevin about that today. I think he was looking more that perhaps stakes disintegrate over time, and, and that the pins would be more permanent. I do recall in previous subdivisions, open space, or excuse me, conservation easements were marked along those boundaries with posts and the proper signage. I think I can remember that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Todd.
Yeah, if I can speak, if I can speak on, if I can speak on a line of this.
I'm Durham.
What, what we have always done is we have gone out and we have either ourselves put in the posts with the signage, or we have put in wooden stakes, and within a week, every applicant that we've worked with has gone out and put in the posts and the signage within a week of us marking it. So for the requirement of pins, I mean, you're talking a couple thousand dollars for us to set accurate pins along those lines. And I feel that's a burden on our applicant that should not happen. And also, I want to speak another thing on Kevin's letter is the fact that we can't do anything on this property until that happens. Lot 1 is far and away from that conservation easement. I know my applicant is hot and ready to start constructing a house on this property. I would like the opportunity to get the restriction on lot 1 away from that. We are probably looking at at least three weeks, four weeks after approval until we can stake out that conservation easement. But I would like the opportunity to let my applicant put in a building permit for lot 1 as soon as possible. So if you guys could release that restriction on lot 1, that would be awesome for my applicant. Like I said, within three or four weeks after approval, we will have that conservation easement marked out, staked, and the filing of the conservation easement and everything. But the restriction on lot 1, which is far and away from that conservation easement, I would like that restriction on that lot released, please.
Yep, and then, you know, for the record, my only comment on Kevin's letter is the maintenance plan is supposed to have weekly inspection of the storm drainage structures. I don't even think the town of Guilford's Public Works checks their catch basins weekly. So I would just be asked, you know, to have that taken out. Monthly, I can see, and then a yearly report. But to have somebody walk up the street every week checking catch basins just doesn't seem feasible to me.
I agree.
So.
Also be handled with just a visual as you're driving, you know, and passing through that, that driveway.
This, so the, the maintenance and the inspection of, you know, the, the stormwater systems has come up before, come before us before. Who's responsibility is it?
This is going to be the responsibility of the homeowners on lot 2, 2, 3, and 4 are all responsible for the maintenance, and all have access granted to that, that detention basin area.
Okay, but it's a, it's a condition of our approval. So how do we, I just, I always wonder why these, these conditions are in the approval, and there's no way to be sure that it's actually happening.
The.
I'm hearing crickets.
Who's going to take it first?
Bingo.
What if you've got one neighbor that's like, I don't want to have anything to do with that?
You know, each, each lot as they're developed, and it's the same thing with maintenance of the roadway, the, the private driveway. It is, you know, it's an issue when you have these shared situations with homeowners, or.
If it's a condition of approval for the subdivision, that the owners of the property maintain the infrastructure, in this case, the drainage, then, and that they, and then they don't do that, then the Planning and Zoning Commission, through its zoning enforcement mechanisms, the zoning enforcement officer can order the property owners to do the maintenance. Now that's, you know, that sounds good. But that's the, that's the legal remedy that we have when that's made a condition of approval of the subdivision. Now, it's not, it's not as good as having the town maintain it, or maybe it's even better, I don't know, but we do have the power to enforce it through the zoning authority.
Well, I'm not going to belabor this, but Aaron, how often do you actually enforce, you know, a prior approval for maintenance of stormwater systems?
On private property.
I mean, there are some that are, have gone through bonding, you know, for larger constructions. Some of this are assistant town engineer as part of our MS4 program monitors. Do we have a perfect system in place? No. Do I know where all of them are? No. You know, I think as part of the requirement of these, there should be a database of all of the you know, whether they're town-owned or privately owned, you know, stormwater systems that are installed. You know, I don't know how that was all set up before I was, before I. Falls under the, the jurisdiction of our plan, of our environmental planner as well.
All I'm saying is, it sounds like a throwaway regulation. It's in there, it's required, but it's not monitored, it's not regulated, it's not enforced. Just for the record.
You know, if I may.
Forced until there's a problem. So if there's a problem, then they can enforce it. I mean, that's kind of the reality.
Right.
And Sean brings up a good point, and this happened about five, you know, to 10 years ago throughout the state of Connecticut. All the municipalities were having us engineers design these extremely large detention basins for like the 100-year storm every time you did a project. They're requiring all this detention. Well, who, who ends up owning that detention basin? The town does. So what happened is the towns didn't have the manpower to go and clean out all these and mow them and keep them, so they just became overgrown messes. It's an ongoing problem throughout the state of Connecticut, is you don't have the manpower, but you're, the, the requirements of the regulations are forcing you to implement some type of drainage structure, but who takes care of it and who monitors it? If you get a good couple neighbors, it works. If you don't, unfortunately, it doesn't work.
I, I get that. It sounds like a catch basin becomes basically a large or large gardening pot that, that is a lot of silt and stuff grows up in it.
Yeah, I mean, basically what happens is, we have, on all of our plans, there is a monitoring on our plans, on the detail sheet, right underneath the, the outlet structure, details that we have on there. And it basically says quarterly. You know, you, you check them quarterly, and we've done this for large developments and small developments and roadways. You know, the reason it's quarterly is after the winter and you sand, well, that's when the sediment collects. So if you, you know, you wait, you know, a year or two, then it collects, you know, gross amount, and then puts it into detention basin. If you're checking it quarterly and it fills up, you just have the vac truck come and suck it out. It's really no big deal. And especially on this project, there's only two catch basins going into a detention basin. So it's a very, very small system. You know, Kevin's requirements for monitoring just seem, you know, pretty extreme, but.
Are you guys okay with just striking the weekly and just going monthly and quarterly?
He's just, he's just taking standard language that we.
Exactly, yeah.
In this, as far as the weekly, I don't.
I'm fine with striking weekly.
Strike weekly.
As far as the filing of the conservation easement, that should be filed, Todd, at the same time as the subdivision map. Are you just not? You're asking to not have the conservation easement marked prior to a building permit for lot 1? Is that your question?
Yes, I was hoping for that.
I'll have to look. That, I think it could probably, no building permit shall be issued. until the conservation has been easily marked.
You know, I'm, obviously the, obviously the conservation easement paperwork and the subdivision map has to be filed prior to doing any construction on any of the lots. What I'm asking is the restriction of having that conservation easement posted with signage.
Right, I can't recall.
I'm asking, I'm asking for a building permit on lot one, which is well and away from that conservation easement, nowhere near the common driveway. I'm asking for the building permit on that lot one to be able to happen after we file the paperwork for the conservation easement and the subdivision Mylar. Uh, because I'm not sure how long it's going to take me to mark that conservation easement with signage.
I think we've done it, uh, multiple ways in the past. I know we've held up COs, uh, wait, you know, no CO until the, the conservation easement is
We, we did, we did, uh, Westside Avenue for Gazi.
I, I remember that and Durham Road, we did as well. Uh, I, I can't, I think that's probably something that we can figure out on a staff level, honestly.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'm, I'm
I'm going to include it in the motion then.
I'm going to propose that we nix the iron pins and just go with marked with signage at approximately fifty-foot intervals.
Okay.
Then there'd be no building permits for lots two, three, and four until after that signage has been posted.
Correct.
Put in place.
Yeah, that's fine.
But lot one, relieve lot one of that condition.
Okay. Um, we have a motion here on the tab, would someone like to read it in?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, uh, I'll throw it out and I'll
You want me to do it?
Sure, that'd be great, Frank, thanks.
I think I got it here. So voted. The start, the zoning commission, approve of subdivision application for Pendergast Holdings LLC for subdivision on this Peddlers Ridge mop seventy-three, lot one. As shown on Peddler Ridge subdivision, six sheets dated seven two twenty, prepared by Anderson Engineering and surveying associates and harking engineering. This application is approved with the following condition. That prior to approval of building permit for any lot, the easement for open space protection be accepted by the town of Guilford. Two, um, should I say Kevin McGee's?
Uh, we're, they were striking two conditions on Kevin's.
The weekly.
One was that the maintenance schedule on the detention basins be limited to monthly and quarterly. We struck weekly. And on section three B, we struck the requirement for iron pins and merely require signage at approximately fifty-foot intervals and turning points.
And turning points.
And they struck lot one from the, uh, from the building permit restriction.
Thank you.
This application is approved based on the finding that it conforms with the zoning and subdivision codes of the town.
Thank you, Frank. Someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Richard, a discussion? Looks good to me, I mean, I, it's hopefully something they can move forward with as quickly as possible. Any questions from Todd or Mike?
You know, I just, uh, want to say something to Jamie. She had asked real quick about lot sizes and I wanted to get her that information, so lot one
I sort of saw them, but thank you.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to
There's one that's five acres, isn't there?
Yeah, and there's one that's nine acres, so
Right.
They're, they're big lots and we did that
I mean, I did have a, a question, Phil, you know, um, I think this has come up again, sort of, I, I'm, I'm feeling what Sean is saying. You know, is there not a movement to do, uh, parcel by parcel stormwater management rather than this shared sort of catch basin idea? It seems a little
I don't know, I mean, I, I think the whole maintenance of, you know, detention basins on private property is problematic in and of itself, but, you know, that's what the regulations call for, so that's kind of what we're, we're stuck with for the time being. I don't know, I mean, I guess they could have had three separate ones, all of which would have some type of restrictive covenant on the property, but, I mean
You know, and, and the, the problem is, it's not a problem until it's a problem.
Mike, do, Mike, do you want to take this or should I take it?
You can take it, Todd.
Yeah, also have to realize, um, go ahead.
The detention basin is for the shared driveway. Every lot will have their own detention system or their roof liter water. The detention basin that is shared is for that common driveway.
It's, so it's for the benefit of all?
Yes.
For just the one, right, okay.
And creating a permeable pavement drive won't do it.
Not at that slope.
No, we actually tried to do that originally. The reason that it is asphalt is for the fire department to get up there. We also had to put a large hammerhead turnaround so the fire trucks can turn around, so, um, one, the slope requires it, um, but two, it's for the fire department.
All right. Um, so we had Frank's motion, who seconded?
I did.
Good, um, I'm good with this. Anyone else? Fine, I'll call the vote. Uh, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown? Alan's muted, sorry. I unmute thee. Alan, you good? Thank you, sir. Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Enjoy your development.
Have fun. Thank you very much, have a great day.
Very much.
Talk to you soon.
Have a great night, everyone.
Night, Todd.
Um, let's see, what else do we need to cover here? We got new applications that are coming?
Yep, you have four receipts here.
Okay, um, so we've got two for the sixteenth. Jack and Beth Mariotti, one-one-four Leets Island Road, map twenty-one, lot twenty-six A, zone R five special permit coastal area management for addition of three-quarter bath to existing detached barn and conversion of space into year-round living and exercise studio installation of seven by seventeen above ground swimming pool. Receive and set public hearing for nine sixteen. Barbara and Jeff Chup, ten Indian Go- Crowe Grove Road, map ten, lot one-six-eight, zone R two coastal area management special permits for section two seven three fifteen G to allow addition to existing single-family dwelling on a lot less than ten thousand square feet at a public hearing date for nine sixteen. BW Bishopson Son, one-three-five-five Boston Post Road, map fifty-two, lot seven. Zone PV special permit request per two seven three seven five Q parentheses two A to request outside music associated with craft permit. And then town of Guilford Park and Rec Commission, one-three-five-O Durham Road, map ninety-seven, lot one D, zone R five site plan application for construction of pickleball courts. We received that.
That one likely won't, uh, be back before you until the nine, uh, the nine sixteen meeting. They do have to go through inland wetlands.
Great, um, so, uh, would someone like to make a motion? Do we have to make a motion to receive those or can we just receive them?
So moved.
You can do them all.
Schedule those public hearings.
Great, uh, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
I will vote yes, they will be received. Um, that, that, uh, any other correspondence there? Aaron?
No, just the minutes.
Okay. I did review the minutes and they appear to be substantially correct. Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Very good. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Thank you. Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Abstain.
There we go, Frank, you did it to me.
I'm just messing with you, I'm going yes.
All right, uh, with no further business before the Planning and Zoning Commission, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Have a great night, guys, thank you.
Night.
And Jamie.
Night.
Night.